Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. I'm sorry, this is a special meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Narit Katz, present. President Richard Katz.
Present.
Commissioner Lehrer.
Present.
Vice President McGraw. Commissioner Pender.
Present.
For board members, a quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome, everyone, and apologies for the late start. And thank you for whoever fixed the clock there, but I appreciate that. It was making me nuts thinking that we were an hour later than we were. It's just one of those days. Before we start the, the meeting today, I'd like to begin today's meeting by taking a moment to recognize November as Native American Heritage Month and honor the enduring contributions of Indigenous communities to our society and environment. I'd also like to take a moment to formally acknowledge Indigenous peoples as the original stewards of the land. LADWP recognizes that we occupy land originally and so inhabited and cared for by Tongva, Tata Viam, Surrano, Keech, and Chumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. The acknowledgement, this acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth healing and reconciliation and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the land's original inhabitants. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with Native peoples and local governments, local tribal governments, including, and in no particular order, the Fernando, I'm sorry, Fernando Tata Viam Band of Mission Indians, Gabriano Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabriano Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabriano Band of Mission Indians, Keech Nation, San Miguel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. Thank you, thank you very much. I also, just on a personal, wanted to add that I was privileged enough when I was in the legislature to write the, the Native American Return Legislation in California. We actually preceded the federal government by a year. Unfortunately, I think many of the institutions in California still lag in returning futury objects and, and remains to tribal leadership as the legislation calls for. And what was most surprising to me was some of our most revered institutions in California, including our university system, have been among the slowest to comply with both the federal and the state law. So we have a lot of work to do. But we started it and we will continue it. So with that, let me turn over to Janice, who has some comments also, our CEO, general manager, engineer, and person in charge.
And mom.
And mom to all of us.
To all of you guys, yes, and my kids, but yeah. Oh, good morning, thank you, President Katz. And I'll just want to double down on your message on Native American Heritage Month. I think it's really important that we acknowledge our, our partnership with our tribes, especially in LA, Owens Valley, Bishop, Mono Lake, all the tribes that have been stewards of our land and that continue to be great partners on being caretakers and ensuring that the legacy of the Indigenous peoples continues through generations to come. So we're here at DWP are also recognizing this month by spotlighting our employees that have Indigenous background in our social media campaign. And they were very gracious enough to share their background and why this is important for them and their heritage. And we, as the department, are very happy to be able to spotlight them through our social media and inside the department. Also, we recently celebrated Veterans Day, which is a very important day for not only me personally, the department, the city, but really the nation. I always feel like Veterans Day is the day that we celebrate democracy. And it's because of the sacrifices of our veterans that we still have a country where you can have elections and elect who you want to elect, have democracy and freedom. And, and a lot of people have sacrificed, done the ultimate sacrifice to continue to protect that, those freedoms. So we have today a great celebration in the lobby. And I invite you guys to go down and see some of the pictures of some of our veteran employees. And, and we're also celebrating the creation of our first veterans ERG called LADWP Valor as an employee resource group, a group that we should have had for many years, but as something that's starting this year with some of our employees really spearheading this, this, this group. And so we'll have the celebration, they'll talk about the group and they will unveil the portraits and public service exhibit to honor the service of our veterans, but also not just supporting our country, supporting also public service as a public servant here in, in the department. So really looking forward to that. I have my PIN, Dave has his PIN, and a lot of our peers are going to be down there. I'm really excited about that. I also want to welcome our newest addition to our leadership team, Soraya Griffin. Soraya, if you can stand up, please, just putting you on the spotlight. Yeah. Soraya is going to be our head of Climate Resilience and Emergency Response for the department. Soraya brings over 21 years of experience in utility. She worked at San Diego Gas and Electric. And about 15 of those years that she worked in San Diego Gas and Electric, she was the head of emergency management for, as the GNE, and deployed the ICS structure for the organization. Did I get that right? Yes. And her last role was the director at Sempra LNG in Houston, so creating the LNG export ports. And she was one of the key directors. And then, so I was happy to steal her from San Diego Gas and Electric, happy to have her here. Her first day was yesterday. And she's, yeah, she texted me last night, she's like, I decided I'm going to stay. And I was like, that's a good thing. Really happy that she decided to stay. Then we have, and I'll pass this to you after I have my points, but MOU signing with the Berlin Energy Agency. We have the mayor of Berlin, Kai Wagner, and the head of the Berlin Energy Agency, Michael Geisler, visiting LA. And they met with Mayor Karen Bass, and we knew the existing non-commitment MOU between BEA and LADWP. President Katz, you want to talk a little bit about this meeting? Oh, you don't know?
We met last week. And we met last weekend. I was very pleased, the mayor asked me to sign on behalf of LADWP and of the mayor of Berlin. And both Mayor Bass and, and the mayor of Berlin made some comments about the important relationship between Los Angeles, LADWP, and California and Germany, and Berlin in particular, and trying to exchange technologies, information, data, and see how we can work together to do even, an even better job on the environment and also on the technology transfer and learn from each other. So, thank you. It was, it was, it was a good, positive meeting and they even got to sample some LA traffic, so. So they got the full experience, they had the full experience. Good weather and traffic, so, thank you.
Yeah, we've, we've had the delegation from Dubai that we had an opportunity to meet. And then we had a delegation from Australia last week also, all talking about innovation, energy efficiency, climate change, and how we're managing the climate transition, clean energy climate transition. So it's been an interesting month with external delegations coming into LA, trying to figure out what we're doing, right or wrong, and learn.
But, you know, what it underscores though, you know, is, you know, there may be yards, feet, or hundreds of miles in between us, but, but it's a very small world, particularly when it comes to the environment and, and global warming and climate change. And, you know, there's no, no one can do it by themselves and no one gets to sit it out either, so.
And we're all answering the same questions, which is really interesting and challenging and rewarding because I don't feel like I'm completely lost when they're asking the same questions that I have questions about, right? So we're all on the same page, which is really good. We also went to two national conventions, the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineering Convention and the Society of Women Engineering Convention, national conferences, actually.
Someone got an award at those.
One guy over there, which, oh, yeah, AC. AC got the Star Award, and it wasn't just the Participation Star Award. It was the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineer Technical Achievement and Recognition Award for Executive Achievement in Government. So I just want to congratulate Anselma Collins for getting this award. It's an amazing award. Yeah. Every time he shows up, he does a really good job. So I'm just going to give him a star every time he shows up. During the Society of Women Engineers, we had about 20, 20 members of the department participate on that in Chicago. My chief of staff, Evelyn, was able to do some keynote remarks, and it was a really rewarding experience for female engineers. And then for our Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers, I was able to do the keynote speaking. It was our 50-year anniversary of the organization. Really rewarding event. We had about 100 participants, it was in Anaheim, so we were able to go down there and, and participate with a lot of, I think it was about 15,000 participants in that conference. And we had great results from our recruiting efforts on the spot offers with really good talent coming into the organization. We're happy to report we're about 40% Hispanic in, in the organization. And so that's a huge number for our, our diversity metrics. LA is about 48% Latino, so we're getting close to representing the communities that we're serving. And then I'll talk about Cool LA. We are finishing the Cool LA program for 2024. October was our last month. We did two events and we gave about 400 units, or portable units. For 2024, we're able to deliver 1,800 units to our disadvantaged community, mostly our seniors. And this program has been really effective to ensuring that our seniors have a cool place to stay when it's, it's warm or extremely hot and help with their health issues and they're highly efficient units and free to our disadvantaged communities. They were able to enroll in a lot of our low-income programs as well. And then I'll pass that up to, to Joe, Joe, I always do this to you, to talk about Charwell Customer Service Award.
Thank you very much and good morning. Yes, I'd like to share some additional good news. Last month, I had shared with you that Chartwell recognized our customer service division's commitment and excellence in serving our vulnerable customers through our Customer Support Saturday Initiative, which has been very well received by customers. They were also recognized by the group for sharing all of the information about how we're better meeting the needs of our underserved residents and customers here in Los Angeles with utilities across the country. So one of those programs, in fact, I wanted to give you a brief update on, is Level Pay, which is something that helps customers spread out the costs across the year of their utility bills, really helps manage their summer bills. And we at DWP have also allowed customers to enroll any late amounts that are due, which is important given the moratorium that we had on collections during COVID. So we've, that program now has, just in the last year, has gone from about 5,500 participants up to almost 20,000 now. So we're just getting started. There's a lot of opportunity there to continue with Level Pay for our customers, but just want to let you know it's growing rapidly. And thank you.
And then the last thing, I'm going to pass that off to Joe and Anselma to talk a little bit about the reaction of our communities with the announcement of the board approval of the Donald C. Tillman Project and the recycled water project. Any input you guys have on what you've heard? I've only heard positive, positive things, which is very different to what happened years ago.
Yeah, there's been a great positive reaction to, to this project. As you know, this board approved the contract with Alexander, $740 million. We're going to be recycling up to 22,000 acre feet of water per year to recharge the San Fernando Basin. There's a lot of excitement. The program was approved by this board and then by the Board of Public Works, so we should be breaking ground pretty, pretty soon. And the entire city is pretty excited about it. This is one of the largest indirect portable reuse projects in the state and probably the entire nation. So we're scheduled to break ground a little later this year, and the goal is to have it completed by 2027. So we certainly will be pushing hard to accomplish this major goal for the water system. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that there was a lot of, oops, there was a lot of work that went into helping to get customers more comfortable with the entire process, right? And there was stakeholder groups that water systems participated in that have been together with MWD as well. And all that foundation over the last five to 10 years really is paying off in terms of public perception. Right now, we got a very nice favorable article in the LA Times about the project, and we hope to continue to foster that. We are planning a very nice public event that we're hoping to get on the calendar here in December that you all will be invited to as well. But thank you.
That's all I have for you.
That's all?
You want more?
Thank you, Janice, thank you for that. Thanks, Joe, yeah.
I just, I would like to congratulate the SHPO, the, this Latin, Hispanic organization that, you know, basically introduces engineering and other professions to students across the country. And Janice was one of the heroes. There were three or four people, including Alex Padilla and others, who spoke either in video, but she was there present. And it was a wonderful, wonderful event. And I think very meaningful and three days after that, three days of conferences. So aside from a little dancing and some drinking, at some point, there was a lot of learning that went down and it was very, I was so impressed. And I, as a landscape architect, I'm actually trying to figure out how to get involved in that organization so that more universities who know what we do, which is a little different than engineering. And, but, you know, so, thank you very much for sort of thinking, I know others are here who were there, it was fantastic. Thank you. Si se puede.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. The Tillman Plant is exciting on so many different levels. I mean, and, and it will once again highlight LA's willingness to try and do innovative, creative things. So a lot of people aren't aware, but in the early, I think it was the mid 80s, when we, we had legis, there was legislation that I wrote that had, was codifying part of the Mono Lake decision at that point. And the idea was to take the water that was reclaimed as part of the Tillman Plant, original project, and use it to backfill some of what we wouldn't be taking out of Mono Lake and, or moving, moving to Southern California. And a city council member out in the San Fernando Valley came up with the catchy phrase of toilet to tap, which cost us 20 years on this project and stalled it for 20 years. And it was 20 years of conservation. That, kind of Connor shaking his head, he remembers it well. But 20 years of progress was, you know, we lost 20 years of opportunity, let's put it that way. And I'm really glad to be part of this board and all of this, and commissioners and DWP along with the city and everybody who works here, finally realizing that potential. The, the cool thing about, I guess, the 20-year delay, we got better technology now than we did then, so we'll be able to do even more. So really looking forward to that plant coming online, so. All right. Any other comments from commissioners?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, two things. Thank you, two things. I, I wish these were military medals, but they're actually alumni medals from USC and activities there. USC is my undergrad, UCLA is my law school, so I can always clap and get east side, west side together. But anyway, I was.
Those are combat medals.
In a sense. So I was honored for service by USC, by the half-century Trojans. And you have to have silver or gray hair or no hair to be a half-century Trojan, so I wanted to say that. But more so, my, my, my congratulations to the people who are service people. I am the wife of a, of a major from the Army, and I did do my little duty at Fort Carson in Colorado Springs. But more so, I'm also, due to the appointment of the, the president of this commission, appointed me to the DWP Retirement Board. That's a big deal. Anybody here that's going to retire from DWP? Well, I'm one of the people on there and we're trying to invest and look after your monies very well. But part of that is being educated. I was sent, and it wasn't a boondoggle, trust me, to San Diego to the Employee Benefits Conference. There, they have a special institute for new, for new fiduciaries, for new people who are in charge. It's called New Trustee Institute, Level 1. There's actually a Level 2. I don't think I'll live long enough to go to Level 2. But Level 1 was over three days. There were 500 people in, in every classroom. We had to be scanned in, scanned out. You did not sit in a lecture format like you are. We sat with a desk in front of us to hold a five-pound binder that we had to bring every day. So I just want you to know that your commissioners and other persons who represent you here at DWP are trying to learn, keep up, get ahead of the curve. We do not look at this as a joke, it is not. I certainly do not look at it. I repeat this, people are shocked when I say commissioners do not get paid. And you would not know what you'd have to pay me to pay me to be here. So we are all very dedicated, and I certainly am. I wish everybody well. The other comment I would make is to an item that, that's going to come up. It's not anything that will stop it from being voted on. Item number two has to do with how we do our insurance payments. People would be surprised to learn that DWP and most public entities have to get excess insurance. If something happens with our transmission lines, if we were to have something burn up miles as, as other companies have had happen, and God forbid if the earthquake comes, standing alone, we could not bear that. We don't have enough money. So we have excess carriers who insure us. And I want to thank all of the people who work on this continuously to make sure we're getting the best rates to negotiate, to try to keep our rates down. But of course, we hope we don't have accidents, but when we do, we do have insurance, just like you have on your car, and that's mandatory for you in California. So I just want to say that to the unknown people who are working behind the scenes to keep us where we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Womel, thank you very much. Appreciate that, Womel, thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
I can save mine for the committee portion, thank you.
I'm sorry, Janice?
Oh, I was just saying I'll save my comments for the committee reports.
Okay, thank you. Public comment.
Public comment is now open at this time. Excuse me, public comment is open at this time. You will have two minutes to make remarks. The first speaker is Connor Everts, who has provided a written document titled Money Flowing for Reclaimed Water to all of the commissioners. Mr. Everett?
Connor, good to see you.
Good seeing you, Richard. Thank you for the connections to what I wanted to talk about today, by coincidence, or not, because we're moving forward on a lot of this. My name is Connor Everts. I, I run a few coalitions with environmental justice and environmental water policy. I'm still recovering from a metropolitan meeting that went five and a half hours into yesterday evening for our panels. I'm an early morning person, I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to see a loud, a large crowd and the veterans' recognition. I happened to go to Lone Pine for the 100th anniversary of the occupation of the Alabama Gates. I went to hear the tribal people of that area, the Owens Valley Tribal Water Commission, and meet some of them. They have been here in Los Angeles, both on a long walk and showing a documentary film, which, which I couldn't stay for, but I will see it and I recommend, we'll make sure, because they were also speaking here when I was here one time as well. There's also the, so they're the Southern Paiute tribe, then the Northern Paiute around Mono Lake as well were there. And it was an interesting discussion. We didn't get to the point where the Alabama Gates were blown up in 1976. We were actually talking about the history and the occupation. However, I want to make sure that, and what I passed out, you know, that shows Richard and some others a few years ago, I think it was actually not 20, but over 30 years ago, Richard, just to date us a little bit. But that, that we all worked at getting money for the Tillman Plant, that the Tillman Plant is moving forward. I hear that we're going to break ground for construction. I'd like to be there and here as well. So thank you all for moving this work forward. I'd also like then to make the connection to the levels of water that I've never seen Mono Lake so high, as I mentioned before, and that we are reaching the point, probably by Thanksgiving, that you have taken the maximum you said you would take out, and the mayor agreed on that. And I hope we maintain that through the water year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connor, good to see you as always.
And if there are any questions, I'll take them. No, okay, thank you.
The next public commenter is former Commissioner Ara Vasquez.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Commissioner Ara Vasquez, and I am here to.
Welcome back to the.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. A lot of wonderful remarks. It's, it's great to see a lot of you, formal, old faces and new faces. And I wanted to come and speak to you about COP16, which was the biodiversity conference in Colombia. It happened every two years, and I had the honor to be there with Commissioner Katz, who is an incredible birth, bird watcher, you know, expert, I came to learn in Colombia. I think she's going to give more remarks about how things happen in Colombia, but I want to address the incredible work and the necessary work that needs to happen in order for us to protect our biodiversity by 30%, by year 3030. And I also want to invite all of you and the people here in the audience to think about biodiversity as something that is part of us, is part of life, and it's not just something separate that we go hike to or, or watch, you know, birds or go swim in rivers or in oceans. This is an intricate part of our livelihood is how we are going to combat climate change. And I know here at the department, there has been great strides to make sure that we plant more trees, that we capture more stormwater, and many other practices that I hope we get to implement even more, you know, in our work here in Los Angeles and especially here with the department. Something very remarkable that happened in Colombia that I think we have been also working on for many years is our inclusion of Indigenous communities and Afro-descendants in the work that is done around biodiversity. And I know that this is also being done here with the equity metrics. In my days as a commissioner, I got to work very closely with other commissioners around that, so I hope that that continues. So I'm looking forward to more, and I think next time, in two years from now, we get more commissioners to come so that they can learn more about how protect our biodiversity and how we can implement that here in Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment is now closed at this time.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Moving along from public comment, yeah. Janice? Any other comments?
No.
No, okay. I was going to give you another shot if you want. Nobody's sitting in the ratepayer advocate seats?
I know.
It feels so weird not to have a ratepayer advocate sitting there.
Is he gone?
He's absent today.
He's just absent today. But he, actually, Dr. Pickle's been kind enough to extend his stay while the city's going through the process of getting us a new ratepayer advocate, because he has served the two five-year terms that he's allowed under the charter.
I presume if he had comments, he would have submitted written comments for us, correct?
It be it had comments, he would have found a way to make sure we knew them, one way or the other.
Great, thank you.
One way or the other. All right. Moving right along, management reports. Actually, before we, before we do management reports, block you?
Yes.
Okay, block vote. Okay, block vote. What are the items? Chantay, you forgot?
We have items N1 through N12.
Thank you. Any objection? Yeah, Ben?
I think Commissioner Pinder have to recuse on item four.
Okay, so, let the record show, Commissioner Pinder took a walk on item four.
Okay.
We can do that one first, if you want to leave, Commissioner Pinder.
Yes, let's do that one first, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, you don't take a long walk, then.
Yeah. I'll put forward a motion to approve item four.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Item four is before us. Without objection, all members present, as I vote, that motion passes and Commissioner can complete her walk back at her seat, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now going on to the remainder of the items, and...
So, motion to approve items one, two, three, and five through 12.
One, two, three, and five through 12. Are there any objections, comments? Folks want to have more time, less time? Without objection. A motion by Commissioner Katz and a second by the recently returned Ms. Pinder, and all members present being recorded as I votes. Those, that passes.
Motion adopted.
And so we'll move on. As soon as I get to the right page here. All right. A couple items that require City Council approval will be forwarded to the council. We now have closed session. What am I missing? Item H, management reports, and I think, Nuri, did you want to give some comment?
I can do the, either way, I was trying to go in order. If you'd like, I can do the commissioner committee activity prior to management reports, or we can do it after.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, sure. So I want to acknowledge former Commissioner Ara Vasquez, who was here and spoke during public comment. Commissioner Lehrer and myself were both scheduled to attend the COP16 biodiversity in Colombia, and unfortunately, Commissioner Lehrer had some health issues and was not able to join us, but I was able to brief her on my return. I also just want to note with the formality of our board that this trip to COP16 was, I funded myself. If it was city-funded, we would have brought it for approval to the board. So the COP16 biodiversity conference, as Ara mentioned, takes place every two years, and it is a conference of parties where over, you know, 190 countries of the world gather to negotiate the key terms of the Convention on Biological Diversity, which is the major international law that governs how we manage biodiversity. So there was a lot of involvement of local governments. City of L.A. was present not only through our commission, but also through the City of L.A. biodiversity office. City of San Francisco was present, and we were all part of a large extended delegation for California of close to 100 people. So California has taken a significant leadership role in this space, having committed to a 30-by-30 commitment even ahead of the prior COP. And so it was really wonderful to see California's leadership on the world stage in that way, to meet with different practitioners from around the world. There was a lot of focus on nature-based solutions, which is an area where LADWP is really working on, especially in our water group through our park stormwater projects and other multi-benefit projects. So lots of good lessons learned, some interesting announcements on the utility side from other countries that we can learn from. So it was a very valuable experience, and I think Ara said it well in terms of the importance of this for us as stewards of our natural resources, of our land and our water, that we really take seriously our responsibility for addressing the climate and biodiversity crises together. There was a major decision put forward that acknowledges that connection between climate and biodiversity that all the countries approved, so that's something to consider as we move forward. As Ara mentioned, there was also some progress made in terms of indigenous leaders' involvement in this international convention. So there had been an informal group that became a formal working group, so there's a more formal structure for all of these indigenous leaders around the world to have a voice. There was still a lot of concern coming from those communities and still a lot of work to do, but it was definitely a positive step, and so I feel it's appropriate to share that progress, particularly during Native American Heritage Month, as we were just discussing earlier today. Our work with our tribal partners, both here in Los Angeles and in the Owens Valley, is so critical, and for us to continue to learn the history, I know we had a presentation from Terry Reddell of the Owens Valley Indian Water Commission at a prior board meeting. So for us to listen and learn even the most difficult parts of our tribal partner's history and to work to, you know, repair, restore, and reciprocate those relationships and learn from each other, and really to learn from the indigenous knowledge that these tribes have of how to best care for our land. So we look forward to continuing that work and wanted to share that report from COP16. I delivered a more formal presentation as part of our Standing Committee on Sustainability and Climate Resilience. I'm going to share a few more updates from that committee, but Commissioner Lehrer, did you want to make a comment as our other biodiversity member? I know you weren't able to be there in person at COP16, but you followed along closely, watching some of the proceedings virtually and being in dialogue with the California delegation.
Yes, as disappointed as I was that my body didn't let me get on an airplane, I, it was amazing to participate in the conference and be in touch with, you know, the delegates and then listen to some of the proceedings. It was, you know, it's definitely a new era. It obviously doesn't replace being there and, you know, and enjoying some of the dancing and partying and good music and food, which also happened, but it was, it sounds like it was a wonderful, you know, it was definitely a wonderful, and we expect some reunions sooner than later. There's also a COP that's going to be coming up in Brazil that we're going to try to follow and see. I know that the state was well-represented there, and I was, having been with Wade Crowfoot on an Australian trip, it was really great to see him really rise up, and he's a true leader.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there was a formal delegation from California led by Secretary Crowfoot and engaging the different deputy secretaries for oceans, biodiversity, et cetera. So a lot of great leadership there. There were also tribal partners present from California tribal leaders. So we shared a presentation on that at the Standing Committee on Sustainability and Climate Resilience, which is now met for the second time. So I wanted to share a couple updates from that committee. We look forward to welcoming Zaraya to that committee in the new year, in the next quarter, as well as a new CSSO for, or Chief Strategy and Sustainability Officer, who will be joining LADWP. So for this meeting, we received a number of updates from staff on key issues ranging from the LCFS regulation and DWP's public comments on that regulatory strategy. We also learned about some important partnership with NIFWIF, which is the foundation that is funding some of the forest restoration in the Owens Valley and projects that have water benefits, greenhouse gas benefits, et cetera. We had some discussion of energy planning for LA 28. There'll be a formal presentation to the full board in the next quarter, but it was good to hear of some of that progress and the partnership with the mayor's office, SCE, Metro, and others to ensure a safe and secure and energy-secure games. We also had some discussion of continued efforts with city plants, partnership with Cal Fire and others, as well as a statewide partnership with VALOR, focused on EV advocacy to consolidate and coordinate along the EV transition. We also heard about staff work partnering with the mayor's office and the climate cabinet, including CMO, which is the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office. A lot of good work taking place there, as well as an MOU with LAUSD that's focused on energy and water efficiency and includes some education efforts as well. A lot of the work that we discussed includes partnering with CBOs or community-based organizations. These organizations are really important trusted partners for us, so it was good to hear about that work, including establishing resilience hubs around the city where people can go during major emergencies, earthquakes, heat waves, et cetera. So some really great work there. Staff are working to fill some of the workforce needs around environmental specialists and ecologists, et cetera. Some good progress on carbon analysis of lands, and our environmental group is also continuing to look into lands that might contribute to the global goals we were just talking about of 30 by 30, so that was great to hear about as well. Our power team shared some key updates around strategic planning and the formation of a new R&amp;D group, which I think we'll hear more about in full board as well, that'll be looking at all the different advanced technologies that we will need to explore as we continue our move towards LA 100. So that was great to hear, as well as creation of more distribution stations that will help reduce load and help us handle heat storms and other challenges that are coming with increased climate change. So thank you to our staff and leadership from different areas of DWP for all of those key updates, and it's good to see the work continuing in sustainability and climate resilience. So that was our commission. We also met with INYO Standing Committee, but I'll let George give an update or Commissioner McGraw at a future meeting, I think. So that is all from me today, and I'm really looking forward to the presentation from the VALOR group and hearing from our veterans within our workforce, and really appreciate everyone's service and looking forward to that presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other reports, commissioners' comments, or anything else from management reports before we move along? What have I got left, Chantay? Before closed session?
Item H. H1?
Okay. I will find that. It's here. I know it.
It's on the screen, too.
Okay, we, no more reports by commissioners on committee activity, filed items we've taken care of, the minutes we took care of, introduction of future, item, future consideration, neighborhood council?
I think we still have item H, the management reports. Okay.
No, I know. But thank you.
No community impact statements or formal positions were filed by any neighborhood councils on any of the items on today's agenda.
Okay. In that case, let's go to management reports and start with VALOR Employee Resource Group.
So coming up to present on this is Patrick Horton, Kerry McCorkle, and Eric Yoshida. Welcome.
Patrick, good to see you again. Last time I saw you, we were loading air conditioners into the back of cars in Canoga Park, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it was you showing the strength and loading those. That was a great...
We were legally putting air conditioners in two people's cars there.
You give me too much credit. I wasn't one of them, but I was present to witness you do it. But thank you, sir.
I wondered about that.
Good morning, President Katz, Honorable Board of Water and Power, and Janice Canones, Chief Executive Officer and Chief Engineer, and Commander, U.S. Coast Guard Reserve, and distinguished veterans and guests. It is our honor and distinct privilege to present to you the inaugural public introduction of LADWP's most recent emergency, I'm sorry, Employee Resource Group. VALOR members present in the audience, please stand. I proudly present VALOR, Veterans Alliance for Leadership, Outreach, and Recognition. The VALOR founding board of directors is our first agenda item. Those board of directors present, please stand and be recognized. They are myself, Patrick Horton, President. I'm a utility services specialist in legislative and intergovernmental affairs, formerly four years Army, four years Air Force, both of those terms of enlistment enlisted, and now I'm a Coast Guard Lieutenant Commander, still serving in the reserves. I'm in year 23 of service. And if I may say to Commissioner Pinder, please give our thanks to your husband for his service and to yours as a spouse. I spent, you know, nearly a year of the first four years of my youngest son's life deployed, and I know what, how spouses share in the burden of service when we're called to duty. So thank you as well. In addition, I'd like to introduce Eric Yoshida to my left. He is Vice President of VALOR. He is a Civil Engineering Associate in Power Engineering Division and a former U.S. Navy Electrician's Mate, Second Class. Also, Romulo Morales, Vice President, also. He is in Water System. He is a Mechanical Engineering Associate III in Water Engineering and Technical Services and a former, and still a Marine, but formerly served as a Corporal, Main Battle Tank Technician in the U.S. Marine Corps. The next member is Ezekias Gonzalez, Secretary, Civil Engineering Associate II, Water Engineering and Technical Services, U.S. Marine Corps. He was a sergeant and field radio operator. Michael A. Olavares, Treasurer, Senior Admin Clerk, Water Engineering Technical Services, U.S. Marine Corps. To my right, after serving in the Marine Corps, then served another 35 years in city service, and still going. He is our parliamentarian. He is a utility services specialist in legislative and intergovernmental affairs and a veteran in the U.S. Marine Corps, Corporal Travel Clerk. This is our VALOR founding board of directors. What we'd like to present to this board is the progress and plans undertaken by VALOR, including our founding board of directors, now adopted, our mission statement, now adopted, objectives, membership, accomplishments, and future events. Our objectives: Leveraging an engaged, talented, and committed membership base, VALOR is committed to several objectives that resonate with our spirit of service as articulated in the VALOR mission statement. And as the slides indicate, among these cornerstone goals are the following. VALOR will build stronger relationships among LADWP veterans and employees, veteran or not, throughout LADWP. Also, VALOR will form and maintain effective mentoring and empowerment groups to carry out the LADWP VALOR mission. Also, within LADWP VALOR, we will provide personal and professional development opportunities, career advice, leadership development, new veteran employee sponsorship, and mock interviews. As part of VALOR community engagement, we will support efforts in the community to conduct employment recruiting in partnership with IBEW, thank you for their support, among service members being released from active duty or reserve members seeking city employment membership. And our, our mission I'd like to read, but from this distance I can't, but please. Age has a way of humbling you just a bit, but I can read my computer day in and day out. All right. Our mission: LADWP VALOR was created to advance LADWP's diversity and inclusion strategy of the interest, for the interest of employees who actively serve or served in the military. LADWP VALOR will serve, promote, and advocate for a supportive workplace environment by offering networking opportunities, mentorship, volunteering, and fostering a culture that values and respects the contributions of all employees. We have many objectives, and we intend to meet them. Note the QR... Note the QR code at the bottom of this slide. This portal takes visitors to an automated enrollment form, and anyone who would like to join Valor, military veteran or a supportive fellow employee or civilian, may use it to join the Valor team and share their talents. As of this date, Valor has grown rapidly over the past four months to approximately 120 members and can. And it continues to expand ongoing, which gives us great optimism for Valor's future. You see this military photo collage? This slide shows just a few of the LADWP veteran employees as they looked while serving our country in the armed forces during their terms of service in uniform to the community and to the American people. As our CEO, Ms. Canones, said, this is, we do this as an inspiration of service to support our way of life and our institutions of government in service to our community. These patriots have extended that legacy of public service as dedicated LADWP employees ongoing and who now fill the ranks of Valor also. This photo collage is just a preview of what we will see in the veteran photo exhibit produced and curated by the LADWP Corporate Communications Team, including Albert Rodriguez, himself, a Marine Corps veteran, and a Valor member, and the DEI Office, Ms. Leslie Shim, Latonya Bogan, among others, and not least of all Greg Reed as well, have been seminal in supporting us. At today's reception, there will be networking in the JFB lobby later today where you can meet many of the veteran employees and Valor members, and we hope you will attend. Now I'd like to turn the mic over to Vice President Eric Yoshida.
Hi. Good morning, Honorable Board. My name is Eric Yoshida. I've served in the U.S. Navy from '92 to '99, and I'm here to share with you some of the accomplishments we've had over the past few months. Our first establishing veterans planning meeting was held on July 10, 2024. There we had about 27 attendees and 10 attendee supporters, or veteran supporters. From that initial meeting, we worked on establishing our name, Valor, Veterans Alliance for Leadership, Outreach, and Recognition. We also took a look at our logo. We established our logo, which is seen in different areas in which we have listed. Also, if you look at the photo in front of you, it's our first informational booth that we had at the new employee orientation event that was held on September 11, 2024. Also, our email address, valor@ladwp.com, was created, and we also finalized our bylaws on October 18, 2024. And also, we established our interim leadership meeting. We had a steering committee to make everything go forward, and also we actually voted on our founding board of directors that we introduced earlier. We look forward to collaborating more with the LADWP DEI team and external outreach, while also Veterans Affairs, State Senate, and Council Offices. And at this time, I'd like to thank everyone, all our veteran employees, dedicated staff, for all the hard work that we've done to make Valor possible, and thank you so much. And now I'd like to introduce our parliamentarian, Kerry.
Good morning, Honorable Board, esteemed leadership. Again, I can't express how appreciative we are of the board and our executives' support for this. One of the things I learned in my time back in Local 18 is that if there isn't a good leadership, executive leadership supporting you, any initiatives that staff, you know, labor wants to initiate just aren't going to make it. So the support of leadership is really important to get this organization up, you know, in a few short months. I've been wanting to see a veterans organization for years, so just everything happens in the right time, right? Right time, right place. So one of the cornerstones of Valor is to make an impact in the community. So one of our pillars is to be an ambassador for the department out in the community, working to support veterans, veterans organizations, veterans charities, reach the veterans where they are, down at Skid Row here within the city of Los Angeles. So we've already begun that program by invitation. We just attended State Senator Menjivar's Valley Veterans Recognition Event. As a personal point of privilege, I met State Senator Menjivar on day one when she was a field deputy for former Councilmember Martinez. So I always tell my fellow LIGA colleagues here, that field deputy that we're talking to today, it could be the next city council member, it could be the next state senator. So these relationships are very important. We also have another event coming up on December 5 by invitation again from Councilwoman Tracy Park, who herself is the daughter of a veteran. This is the second Veterans Resource Fair that they're holding out at the New Directions for Veterans site out at the West LA Veterans Administration Facility. I'll get this flyer and invitation out. We're trying to get, this is kind of the first really big Valor Community Service event. A couple of other things we're looking at doing is some Habitat for Humanity veterans builds. I've done a couple of myself. They're one of the most rewarding community services, hard work, but to be with a veteran, helping build their, the home that they're going to live in was quite rewarding, and also some volunteerism opportunities with the local Veterans Administration Facility and with the community. So we've got to have a pretty full plate of events and activities that we're going to sponsor throughout the year, and I can talk about community service all day, something I'm very passionate about, so I am not. I'm going to pass it back to Mr. President. Thank you.
And this brings us to our last slide. We again thank the board for the honor and opportunity to introduce Valor in its inaugural presentation of leadership, mission, objectives, accomplishments, and future plans. We also extend our sincere thanks to Mr. Greg Reed, Dave Hanson, DEI Office, and special thanks to Chief Executive Officer and Chief Engineer and current Commander, U.S. Coast Guard Reserve, Janice Canones. As we conclude this presentation, we want to invite anyone interested, veteran or not, to consider joining the Valor team. We want you to know that you are welcome to enroll with the QR code or email address below on this slide. This conducts our presentation of Valor, and we invite you to join the reception at the John Ferraro Building Lobby Level at 1300 hours Lima time. That's 1 PM for civilians. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the Valor Group, and my father was also a veteran. I appreciate what all of you have done for all of us. We may not say thank you often enough, but you're never far from our minds and in our hearts, and we appreciate all the sacrifices you and your families have made to keep this country great. So very much thank you for putting this together and presenting it to us today, and whatever we can do to be supportive, please let us know. You'll find a very willing and supportive group of folks around here, as you already know. So Patrick, good to see you again.
Yeah, I'd love to add to that. We're really looking forward to the event this afternoon, and I just want to say this ERG is long overdue, and I'm really grateful to see it established. I want to acknowledge former Commissioner Neiman Brady, who also really advocated for this group's creation and was very supportive. We'll make sure to let her know that it is now a reality. And just wanted to echo President Katz's comments in terms of thanking you for your service, but also just acknowledge how valuable it is now to have you as part of our workforce. You know, all the different military branches really, you know, for all your joking, you know, competitiveness with each other, you all share this amazing focus on what it really means to be a team and what it really means to focus together on a critical mission. And that's something that I think LADWP needs, and I know that that culture that you bring to our organization will help us get our own critical missions done. So very grateful to have Commander Canones at the helm of this organization and to have all of you helping to bring that expertise forward. So thank you very much and looking forward to celebrating with you this afternoon.
Thank you, Nori.
President Katz, you want to say something?
Thank you very much for coming and doing that presentation, and like we said a few times here today, this is long overdue. So again, thanks to the leadership of the skipper for pushing this down the road and actually getting this going. It's refreshing to take a moment and acknowledge it. We've talked about the sacrifice, and it is on the home front as well as on the battlefield. When you look at the wars that we fought as a country, the only reason that we've been successful is because we've galvanized the home front and put people to work that don't traditionally work in industrial-type settings in the '30s and the '40s, and we saw how it worked out for us. So when we stick together, we can accomplish anything, and I think when we look at the men and women that served the United States in the United States military, the training that they get, it's second to none. I think there's a pressure situation to everything that we do in the service that kind of adds to our ability to be able to see through the fog and stay calm under pressure and make decisions. We have a lot of people that are good at pointing out problems. We need more people that are better at solving problems, and the veteran recruitment is definitely pushing the right direction for that. So thank you guys for stepping up and leading this thing. It's my honor to be your executive sponsor and proud, very proud day for us and looking forward to hanging out with everybody in the lobby at 1300 hours, shipmate.
1300 Lima.
I love the tie, too. Does it see the tie?
This was gifted to me by one of my obnoxious lineman friends, and I love it, so.
There's only one who's obnoxious or only one that's your friend?
You know, I'm not going to answer that question.
I'll just, I'll just say a couple of things. I'm just very proud of you guys. I cannot tell you how my heart is so big of just love and pride for what you've done in such a short amount of time. I know we mentioned that this had to be done a long time ago, but it's done now. I love Valor. I don't know who came with that, but that's amazing. And I'll tell you, on top of what Dave shared, you know, once you go in the military, they can kick out the military out of you, right? It's a family, and it's such a family that you understand collaboration, teamwork in a very different way. So much so, Patrick and I served together, so we known each other from the Coast Guard before I even started in the department, and there's other members here that are department employees that have served with me in the Coast Guard before, because we're a small family and we always run into other service members that we've served in the past, and so it's, I'm really happy, Patrick, that you're leading this organization and that. Terry, thanks for how much you care about this and making sure that this happens, and I'm glad that you get to see it before you retire, because I know it's coming, and I'm happy that you get to experience this. For the rest of us, ERGs are very important from a diversity perspective, but what we do with ERGs and how do we activate ERGs, how we do support ERGs is really where the rubber meets the road, right? And I think it's important that we understand the needs of our diverse population, but especially our veteran population that are struggling with a lot of issues after deployments and after serving our country. And so how the department supports our veterans is really critical. So this is not just an ERG that's a stamp and that we got an ERG. We got to put our money where our mouth is. So I'm looking forward to all the good work that we're going to do for employees and our communities, and this is, this is a very proud moment. I'm a proud mama today.
Woman?
Well, then I'll be the proud grandma. There's an expression, wherever you go, there you are. So all I ask for everyone, whether they're veteran or not, if they're part of this DWP family, be who you say you are.
Wise words, wise words. Let me also add one last, or two comments. One, I was impressed with how quickly and completely you stood up the organization since September, and as a result, I think we're going to shorten all your timelines for projects for DWP based on that military know-how and getting things done. But on a more, on a serious note, I just also want to say that it's important, there, it seems to me, and it's unfortunate, that there are a lot more people who are supportive of people enlisting and joining a service while and before and during while they're in service. Don't seem to be as many people being supportive after you get out of service. And there are a lot of veterans who need and, you know, need help and need assistance and particularly the holidays, but we should not forget those veterans as well. And it's unfortunate that in this country sometimes that happens, and that's something that needs to be corrected, so. But we are going to do everything we can, and we will be supportive of Valor and everything that you're involved in and whatever we can do. As everyone up there has said, we understand the debt we owe you all and your families, and we'll be supportive however we can. So with that.
Can I say one more thing, President? Also, we do have several men and women at the department that are currently serving as well as family members that work at the department whose children are recently deploying. I just spoke to a mother yesterday that her child has enlisted and is going on their very first deployment, so it's a gut-wrenching time. You're proud, but at the same time, very apprehensive and scared of the future, but not enough can be said about the current sacrifice as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for mentioning that. All right, we have two items, two more items to discuss before we go to closed session. Yeah. How about, we got a management report on power reliability?
So we have Jason Hills from Power Engineering Design and Brian Williams from Power Transmission and Distribution will be updating the board on our annual Power System Reliability Program.
Okay. Gentlemen, welcome. Okay, if you break it, you bought it. I'm sure there's someone here that can fix that.
There we go. Can you hear me? There we go. Okay, well, good, is it morning? Yes, morning. Good morning. My name is Jason Hills. I'm manager of Transmission and Distribution Engineering, and with me have Brian Williams.
Good morning, Brian Williams. I'm with Power Transmission and Distribution, and I just want to thank everybody for their service. It's an honor that we have such a wonderful department with so many veterans here working for us, so appreciate everybody's service.
All right, so we're here to present on the Power System Reliability Program, and to be honest, we haven't presented on it for probably two years at this point, so we're definitely overdue for an update, and we do have a lot of content that's included in the Power System Reliability Program, but we did want to get into a little bit of depth in this presentation, so we do anticipate that you are going to be seeing many more recurring presentations or briefings from the program team moving forward, but this will, you know, be here to tee it off for you guys to get things started. So the Power System Reliability Program is, was established actually as a Power Reliability Program back in 2007. It focused strictly on distribution assets at the time, and in 2014, it morphed into the Power System Reliability Program that added generation, transmission, and substation assets. So power system-wide basically was the focus at that point. And the primary focus is to evaluate the power system current and future needs and establish and maintain reliability goals. So as you know, this is a large program. It's one of the primary focus programs of the power system. The budget ranges around $1.4 million, so what you see on the right, I'll focus first on the middle right table, just so you see the actual column. Last year, we spent $1.375 billion on PSRP. The approved budget was $1.44. So it's a massive program, around 25% to 30% of the entire power system budget. You can see on that table on the capital side, that's like the upgrades and asset replacements. We were underspending by 11%, largely due to human resource limitations. And as a result of having underspent in capital improvements, typically you would see that there would be an increase in. there would be an increase in maintenance expenditure. And we'll show an example later on in the slides. But overall, we underspent by 5% from last year. Now, if you look at the chart on the left, you can see the pie chart, which breaks down the main components, expenditures of the power system reliability program. You see that distribution is the largest component of the power system reliability program. And we'll get into that later on as to why that is the case. But followed by distribution, you got substations, generation, and then transmission. On the top right, you could see the three largest, I just wanted to pick the three largest programs within the power system reliability program. These subprograms, the pole replacements, cable replacements, and vegetation management, which all do impact the reliability indices that we'll be talking about in a bit. And just to also emphasize the magnitude of this program, it does consist of over 200 programs or projects across the four sectors, generation, transmission, substations and distribution. Lastly, I'll just point out in the bottom right, we noted that the current year budget for PSRP is about $1.5, $1.6 billion. There was an increase due to various reasons. There's the cost of living adjustments, there's ramp-ups in targets, there's an increase in costs of materials. And then there are some efforts that were later determined in consultation with OPA and FSO that were determined to be reliability-related and were transitioned into the PSRP program.
The number, the whole request was, for instance, $153 million. Is that an annual or is that a total start to finish to fix everything we need to fix?
Okay, good question. So that was actually the 23, 24 actual expenditures. And you'll see how many poles in the next slide, I think you'll see how many poles. It was close to 3,000 poles. So to get those poles replaced, that's 153 million was what we spent.
And how many poles do we have?
130,000?
311,000 poles in our system total, yes.
I'll have more.
Sorry, 130,000, I was talking about we're transformers. But okay, moving on to the next slide. So you know, one of the things that I do appreciate about the current leadership we have here is they are expecting that we are very transparent. So what I wanted to list here on this slide, are assets that we've been focused on replacing, whether we've hit our targets or not. And you will also see in some cases, we, our actual replacements were zero. And I want to explain a little bit about that. So for example, the first item there, generator transformers, we did have some issues with procurement to receive some of these transformers. Some were stuck at the port due to customs. And then also, we did have some delays due to permitting. So there are some issues that we got to work through, but we got to plan for and address. So these, so that's an example of one area that we're looking to tackle and improve on. Additionally, you see in the transmission section, there's a blank there. We had some targets in previous years, replacing cables as well as vault lids. Those were actually completed the year prior. So that target just, you know, was completed. So we need to be creating new targets. For this current fiscal year, one of the targets we did create was tower painting. So we have a new KPI. That's an important thing to extend the life of our transmission towers. So we are looking at additional KPIs to add for the transmission sector.
As we're going through this, I'm sorry, one of the, one of the problems of aging is I don't remember it all as long and as timely as I used to. So I may interrupt you to ask you a question from time to time. My apologies. But when you were talking about, now I got to remember what I wanted to ask you. When you were talking about the poles and what's the lead time, for instance, on getting transformers from our suppliers? What kind of, what kind of challenges are you facing in terms of, you know, availability, supply? And I'll ask it, the whole question, all I remember, but I mean, that's something that I know has been a problem in the past. I worry, how much of that comes from overseas?
Yep.
Particularly if it comes from China? And if the new administration gets into a trade war with China, what are our backup plans for that? I mean, along, along that same line, if we're facing 20 or 30% tariffs on a lot of this equipment, that's going to reduce the money to buy. I mean, it makes it more expensive to, you know, what, so what are we, what are, how are we trying to plan for the future here in addition? And by the way, I do appreciate the transparent on this. I know sometimes there's a tendency not to, not by you guys, but we can't help if we don't know what's going on. So trust us that we're all, we're not asking, we're not looking to burn people, embarrass people, what have you, unless they don't respond. But no, but I mean, we can't help unless we know, we know the problem, how big it is, how small it is, or, you know, how complicated it is and how can we help? So that's why I asked the question.
So we're going to, we're going to get a little bit into that on the distribution side, but just from a power transmission and distribution standpoint, we do have adequate transformers. We usually stock up and when we know there's going to be a heat storm and things like that, when we know transformers have a more tendency to fail. So there is an adequate supply as far as distribution goes. As far as a substation goes, some of those are really expensive and there's a super-long lead time. So those are the ones that we really have more of an issue with as far as procuring those. I can't speak for that group, but I know there is a plan and they do look at that, those aging assets. And also there's a plan also to refurbish as much as we can. So there are some spares available for the big bank transformers as well. So we do take that into consideration as far as the PSRP goes and keeping up with these transformers. And I'll get into a little bit more detail on the distribution side when we get to those slides.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry, Dave.
No, he can go first.
Just to ask you, answer your question about lead time, when we're talking like the large transformers that are inside of our substations, before COVID, it was about a five-year turnaround time from the time that we ordered to the time that it came across the ocean. And now we're seeing about seven years. So COVID has definitely impacted that supply chain. I think last time, when we saw the same administration, the hope of his tariffs was to drive domestic manufacturing. But we haven't really seen that swing up in his absence. So we'll see what happens this next time around. It's definitely something that we're looking into and it's causing us to have a much more longer strategic goal, focusing on the 10-year realm now instead of just five.
Is, is part of it, I mean, is that much of this comes only from China? We don't have a lot of options in other places to be shipping?
Well, we're kind of all competing for the same thing. Everybody's power system is aging at the same rate. So we're all ordering the same, essentially the same equipment from the same handful of manufacturers. And where we see the proliferation, am I saying that right, Joe? Of new companies that produce transformers, it is coming from, from the market that you mentioned before.
I would add, President Katz, we've been talking about this internally for many reasons. One, the city of LA has this policy of lower bid issue and a lot of our equipment, and you guys can, please correct me if I'm wrong, which causes a real issue in inventory because we get whoever's the lowest bid into our system. And now we have multiple manufacturers that are mayor, might not be on the, on the business anymore, right? And so we've been working on prefer manufacturers and creating prefer relationships with known long-term manufacturers that are in manufacturing in the US. It's just going to take us time to go through the RFP process through the city, but some of these policies have to change because of who we are as a utility.
I'm surprised, it's just straight low, it's not lowest responsible bid.
Not lowest bid, yes.
Because at Metro, MTA, at Metro, it's lowest responsible bid, which gives us more flexibility. Because you come, there are a couple of other intangibles that then come into play.
Metro has other leeways that we don't have currently. But we work with General Counsel a lot on how we change some of these policies because just for maintaining the system is just that much more complicated. But now with supply chain, not only COVID, the tariff is a real risk, but also the energy transition is requiring people to upgrade substations faster than they've ever had. And every utility has defermentance across all of the areas of their system. So we're all tapping the same manufacturer, to Dave's point. And so what we need is to be able to have a complete production line.
Right.
So that we can create a line that just comes to us because we have constant volume of products coming into LEDWP and the manufacturers are able to separate some of that manufacturing coming into the region.
Maybe there's a way to use, you know, I mean, we obviously purchase more of everything than almost anybody else around us and maybe we can use that buying power as a way, you know, to get, to do something to help relieve it. I know we had a brief conversation with the mayor of Berlin the other day about this and talked about not just the transformers and the heavy-duty equipment pieces of it, but more nuts and bolts, frankly. Is there a way to stand up more manufacturing, you know, in Southern California and use some of the abandoned facilities we have here to put in? You know, it's not as fancy as transformers, but they're, you know, without nuts and bolts, just you can't do the work either. So maybe on that scale. And there was some interest from the German mayor's office, but we, you know, may be able to work out something, maybe there's something we can work there to bring some of that manufacturing.
Last time I was at the large public power council meeting with the CEOs of the other large public power, we all have the same issue. And one of the suggestions was to standardize a lot of our equipment because that's the other thing, every utility has different voltage, different type of equipment, different configurations. And so it doesn't help manufacturers when they have 20 here, five there, 25 here. And so if we are able to standardize across the industry, we're able to keep manufacturing in the US better. That's going to take a long time and it's a lot of money. But all the utilities are facing the same thing. So whoever gets ahead of the strategy and executes some of those strong partnerships will be ahead of the game.
Well, we could try and, you know, use all our resources to get ahead and then offer to sell it to the other folks. It's likely that we're paying for it. So, you know, but, but do what we can there. But I appreciate that.
I would say though, two things. The team has done a really good job at highlighting the issues, which is not something that usually you see in utilities, but two, you didn't see here. And so I really commend them for being honest and transparent about this because then we can help solve for the problems and understand what the real issues are underneath that. But two, they've done a really good job at stacking up on the distribution system, even the circuit breakers. They have a circuit breaker extension life program that's bar none because we had to. But they're really good at what they do to extend the life of over 40 years on really old 1930 circuit breakers because there's no longer the manufacturer to do it, right? And that's what we have. And so.
I hope we patented it and we're going to go out and sell it to our competitors.
We have, we have a lot of utilities come and see it and they're very impressed of what they do and what they're able to do for us.
Serious.
Yeah. You should, you should go see them because it's an amazing team and they're doing great work through our lab and then sending to our shop.
Let's do that.
I can set that up for you. I can set that up for you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. I'll continue on to the next, I guess, zero that you see there, substation automation upgrades. So that one did struggle to get the specific resources needed to perform that. We do believe that's a very critical and necessary program that needs to be re-engaged. So, you know, moving forward, we are planning to allocate resources to execute that, to basically make our substations smarter, better visibility, better control capabilities, allow us to detect outages, respond to outages and restore from outages quicker. Lots of benefits to that program. So that's another one of the areas we aim to focus moving forward. You could see down in the distribution side, we did pretty well. We hit most of the targets, poles and crossarms not as much, but then cables, transformers and substructures, we did well. And in some of the slides moving on, you'll see that these components are some of the ones that impact reliability quite a bit. So, can't move on. And, okay, now moving on to the topic of the different reliability indices. There are three primary reliability indices in the utility industry. So it's SAFI, SADI and CADI. Those first three that you see there are the most common ones that you hear. And they're the ones that the utilities across the board use to measure themselves against themselves over time as well as across to other utilities to see how you stack up against other utilities. So SAFI, you know, these acronyms I know are tough. So the way I look at it, SAFI, S-A, system average, and then the F is frequency, like system average frequency. How many outages across a system are experienced by our customers? So all the outages divided across all our customers. So if you were a customer last year and our SAFI was .7, that means on average, you would experience less than one outage over that time period of one year. Next item is SADI, system average, and that's duration. So adding up all the minutes of outages experienced throughout the system for the past year, dividing that across all the customers. So as an event, as a customer, how many minutes of outage time on average would you have experienced last year? CADI, now the C in that one is customer focus. So CADI, the difference between that system versus customer, for CADI, it's if you, if you experience an outage as a customer, how long would the average duration be for, for any customer who experienced an outage? And we'll show some where we're at in the next slide, but I just also want to touch on MAFI. That one was a request a couple of years ago that we added to our tracking mechanism. But just so you know, that one is for outages that are less than five minutes. So they're a little harder to track, especially if you don't have all the smart equipment out there. And they're also less impactful typically for customers, especially like residential customers, because the power gets restored much quicker. One last definition I wanted to point out at the bottom there, you see major event days. So in order to kind of normalize your metrics, you, there is a formula established by IEEE, the industry standard, to basically extract major event days so that you could really better compare yourself to previous years because, you know, there might be one storm every four years and it'd be hard to compare how you're doing in terms of your upgrades and improvements in your system if you have to account for those major event days. So there is a mechanism to extract those major event days from your calculations and I'll, I'll show you that next. Sure.
I'm going to ask a question before you move on. On the SAFI, you mentioned it kind of captures number of outages. So are the customers duplicated? Because to me, no, total number of customers experiencing interruption could be the same regardless of the number of outages, unless it's counting like customers per outage.
Correct.
Okay, so it's customers per outage even if, like if the same customer gets 10 outages during the year, they're counted 10 times. It's not. Okay, thank you.
Correct. Okay.
Sorry. I just want to make sure I got it.
Moving on to how we did in 2023. Here are the three major indices that we compare ourselves against. So we are the blue. And I mentioned major event days. So the, the kind of like faded bars, those are all inclusive of those major events. You could see really the way we compare ourselves is to excluding major events, which are the bold bars. So you could see how we're doing with regard to the frequency, the system average frequency on the left. We are pretty comparable, doing better than PGNE, SCE, but SDGNE is doing better. So you could see we're doing pretty well there. So in the past years, we have been first quartile across the, when compared to the IOUs in California. Then comes SADI. You could see where we're at there. The bold is 141 and that's in minutes. So an average customer would have experienced 141 minutes of outage time in 2023. That's better than PGNE, but not as good as SCE and SDGNE. So, but generally in the vicinity of those other utilities. This one, we were in quartile one and bouncing around there, one and two. And then CADI. So I know this is one of the, one of the metrics that our RPA had emphasized the need for improvement. And you could see here that that is the case, that we do have a customer average restoration time. That's a bit higher than the other utilities, the other large IOUs in regards to our comparison to throughout California IOUs. We're in the third quartile. So that is an area that we are aiming to work on, our customer average duration.
Do we have a sense of the driver of that duration for restoration? Is it a staffing issue? Like what, what is our biggest challenge there?
Yes, so, so it does, we'll dive into that in a bit, but yes, staffing is a major driver. We've had some improvements, especially during the recent heat storms, basically locating driver. We've had some improvements, especially during the recent heat storms, basically locating our, our staff closer to, basically locating in areas where we may not have as easy access to outages. And then also having the adequate amount of staff is another area. And then I'll leave the other drivers to Brian to discuss.
And some of that may be addressed by these new centers that we're establishing?
Correct, correct. I think you did see a presentation a couple of meetings ago about getting additional facilities and that is one of the drivers for requesting that.
So that's correct.
One, one thing I would say SAFI is the frequency, CADI is response time, and SADI is SAFI over CADI. So CADI is driving our SADI numbers right now. And the other thing that I would add, and probably Brian, you can talk more about this, is, you know, we don't have the sophistication on the system that Edison and SDGNE and PGNE have to restore outages from remote locations, right? Like, so we have to send crews most of the time unless we're switching at the station and we're able to pick load that way. And I think the other thing is, you know, our traffic in L.A. is critical. So the locations of where we're seeing the frequency of outages and where our crews are located, it's important. But really having the visibility and understanding where the outage is, we have a lot of underground facilities and those are longer time to find the fault and restore. A lot of the Edison and PGNE outages are overhead. So those are easier to locate and faster response time.
Yeah, that makes sense. And maybe you're going to hit this in the presentation, but do we also track sort of the, the, do we track this from an equity lens? Do we look at the geographic distribution of outages? I believe we do, but just want to make sure that we're thinking about kind of how our different communities are impacted and may have different age equipment, et cetera.
Yes. So we had been for, for many years now, tracking it by zip code. But we have been involved in the equity strategies efforts. So attending meetings, sharing how we are measuring this and seeing where there's opportunity to further ensure that we're not leaving anyone behind and, and making sure it's equitable across the board. So, yes. Any other questions on that topic?
I was just going to make a comment about CADI, and that was the previous presentation by Power Construction and Maintenance about the additional reporting locations for the substation folks. So the idea is to get smaller, more manageable areas, more districts out there and distribute our substation maintenance, as long as our, our test personnel that are also involved in commissioning new equipment, it'll lower the response time. So you'll be seeing those property purchases come.
It was also the first thing I asked Dave when I met him. What's our CADI?
Yeah.
What's our CADI and what's our lost workday instance? Those were the first two quizzes.
I was actually, when we were, had the report a little earlier on the audits, I was surprised at the low number of vehicles that are taken home by our employees. Because I would have thought from a response standpoint, that would have been a higher number.
Those were the take home vehicles that are assigned to managers, but field crew peoples, if power distribution or transmission has vehicles assigned to their division, they're not individually designed. I believe management does allow them to take them home for that reason.
But those were reflected in the number.
They're not reflected. Those 400 were just managers and supervisors who have a take home vehicle that's not used in daily construction or operation activities.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. And now I'll hand it on over to Brian.
So to answer some of your questions, we're going to get into, you know, what, what impacts the reliability metrics as far as the outages and the duration. So you can see up in the pie graph there, we have the SADI contributions, which include station equipment. So 5% of the outages are caused by station equipment. We have vehicle collisions. So some, a lot of times, a lot of our infrastructure on the power distribution side, as you can see in the picture on the bottom there, vehicles come and hit our poles, which cause outages and create problems. And we have to have crews go out there and respond and, and get that up and running and replace those poles. Another big factor that we continually struggle with, I get daily reports on this, is mylar balloons. So the mylar balloons cause major outages all the time. Sometimes they can be really minor where it's just a circuit relay, which, you know, is less than five minutes, circuit relays and comes back on. And then, you know, we'll patrol the line. Other times, it can cause significant damage where it burns down a line. Sometimes it's our 34.5 and it burns down the primary. So that creates a lot of challenges for us, especially during graduations and during festive times. We tend to see an uptick in the, in the mylar balloon. And the other factor we have there is the 12%, which is weather related. And that could be anything from, you know, high heat. As we've recently seen, we've had heat storms which, and wind storms. So in each one of those weather related conditions impacts our power distribution system in, in a fairly different way. Typically, when it's windy, you're going to see a lot more of our overhead lines being impacted from the wind and the trees that are coming down into the overhead. So you're going to see a lot more of those customers affected, whereas in the wet rainy season, which we're coming into, a lot of times, the underground infrastructure takes a big hit due to the underground. So depending on the weather, it's going to impact our, our system in a different way. We have vegetation management. We have a very robust vegetation management group, but even with all of that, trees still do impact our distribution system and we're, and do cause outages from time to time. So we, that again addresses that. And then the other big piece over there is just our normally reliable distribution equipment that, that fails from just our aging infrastructure. And that's where we get into our cable replacement and our overhead line upgrades and just loading issues from circuits getting overloaded. So those are some of the contributing contributions to a lot of these outages affecting, you know, the, the reliability metrics. Any questions on that? So the next one we get into to answer your question, circle back around regarding distribution transformers. So currently, the department has 131,754 transformers in our distribution system. The average life expectancy of those distribution transformers is about 40 years. So that means we have 30, 32% of in-service distribution transformers that are exceeding their life expectancy. And so you can see on that chart on the bottom, what we're trying to do through our power system reliability program is really close that gap between the average life expectancy of the transformers and the number that we need to replace. So we're constantly taking a look as transformers fail, as more load gets added, as, as they just get older, we're looking at that and we're closing that gap. And that, that comes back down to manpower and resources and what we can physically do. And from an equity standpoint, we're continually looking at and saying, okay, you know, from an equity standpoint, what's the average? How are we focusing on that in certain areas? And what we've done to help close that gap is we've added additional resources. We've added additional line crew down in the Wilmington District, which serves the Port of L.A. And with that, hopefully, we can get crews to work the South L.A. and into the Palms area, just to minimize the amount of traffic that it takes for our central crews and Palms crews to get down there. So we're really kind of strategically looking at our facility size and how do we properly staff those resources and get them moving around, not in their traditional area, but really to serve those underserved communities in a more efficient manner. So that's something we've done. And that comes with better data. So getting better data helps us close that gap a little bit more too. Because with better data, we can better dispatch our crews. So rather than relying on a customer to call us, we're really moving in a direction, working with our electric trouble board to try to minimize that downtime and really dispatch crews earlier in the process so that we can get there quicker. And that's just going to come with time and that, and also will help us prioritize our work. Again, when we get into the, to the weather, prioritizing our work is really critical because in a high heat, we really want to try to get those customers back on a little bit quicker. But if it's a wind event or something like that, we're going to try to get the most customers on that we can and get the most bang for our buck. So those are some of the things that we're looking at as far as the reliability metrics on the distribution side.
I would add too, on the equity metrics, and this is something I learned because of the wildfire mitigation plans, a lot of our efforts on the reliability programs and improvement on our distribution side has been on the wildfire mitigation plan, which happens to be on non disadvantaged communities, right? Our wildfire areas are in the high income areas. And so now that we're probably in, in a place on, we still have a lot of work to do on the wildfire mitigation plan, but we got to balance that to the disadvantaged areas. And we're doing the mapping across the board on where our disadvantaged areas or where our plan is to highlight. I saw some maps on the substations that we need to upgrade and how it ties to our disadvantaged communities. But those are kind of the things that we're constantly balancing. But we're going to be very intentional in bringing that disadvantaged community overlap into our planning process.
Two questions on this.
Two questions on this area. One, do we have an actual timeline and plan to essentially get rid of the backlog and fully close the gap? Or we're at a replacement rate that would keep us from having this kind of deferred maintenance backlog? Or when you talk about closing the gap, are you, is it a, it's not fully closing? Or, you know, what is the, how many years would it take us to actually get to a, a rate of maintenance where we're on target?
So there's a lot, there's a lot of different metrics that go into that. And a couple of things is one, we're looking from a reliability standpoint. So some of those transformers, they might not necessarily be as old as others, but they've just gotten to the point where they're just overloaded. So we're looking at the load growth. So a lot of those transformers are getting replaced just because people are adding more EV chargers and there's a lot of load growth. So those might get moved up on the priority scale just because at some point they're going to fail sooner, not because of age, but just because of loading. So we take that into consideration. And then we're also looking at the age of the transformer. So it's constant moving target. But our ultimate goal is to get that, that percentage of those 40-year life expectancy and the number of transformers significantly reduced. And we're looking at all different kinds of metrics based on reliability and how we approach that.
But we don't have a formal timeline for that yet. I mean, five years, 10 years, 20 years, what are we kind of looking at?
We're working on, on that plan. I think, you want to talk about the group you created?
Yeah.
That's a really important key factor of where we are versus where we were in order to create a planning process. And then there's also a conversation to have on asset management, how do we prioritize the plan? And then the resource plan that is attached to that, right? And, and with that comes a balance between contracting resources and internal resources based on our hiring constraints from a city perspective. So.
And maybe as you're commenting on that, since it may be the same group, I'd love to know also if you're prioritizing planning for weather events based on kind of vulnerability of equipment. So I understand there's an atmospheric river that may be coming our way as well as hitting Northern California. And are we kind of, you know, doing some planning for those types of emergencies or extreme weather events based on prior failures and vulnerability and age of equipment, et cetera?
Sure, sure. Yeah. So we're, we're always planning. I mean, that's just one of the things we do, right? It changes with the season. But as, as a power distribution, we're always forecasting, we're checking the forecasting models, and we're always planning ahead. We also have our abnormal circuits that we focus a lot on, open cable, things like that, that we're trying, we try our best to try to harden the system and get rid of those, that old infrastructure with cable replacement, so that when we have these atmospheric river events, that our system can be robust and, and weather the storm. And that's always ongoing.
I, I have a, might seem like not as important a question as the transformers and the like, but I see this wood pole. And I've started seeing more and more metal and also concrete poles. And first of all, I'm wondering what forest we were decimating for the pole. But just curious, because, you know, it, we've been starting to see a lot of the metal and concrete out, you know, in, in the city. And just curious how, how decisions are made and.
Yeah. So a lot of the design for those poles gets, goes to our overhead distribution design group. And a lot of times, you're going to see metal poles because of the, the strength. Steel is obviously a lot more stronger than wood. And so you're going to start to see a lot more steel poles just because of the durability and the strength. And we run that through what's called a oak calc. So we actually will, will strength test our poles, depending on the size of the wire, what type of equipment we're putting on it, the length of the span. So all that gets put into a strength calculate to kind of help us determine what size anchor for the durability and longevity of that pole or that asset to make sure that it's up to standard. So.
But if that's the case, why use wood at all?
Cheaper, faster.
Cheaper, faster.
Yeah. And the other aspect of it too is working with steel obviously presents different challenges. So in certain situations, we can't climb a steel pole because we can't work energized off of a steel pole like we can with wood. So sometimes just the condition of the asset and where it's located is going to require us to use a wood pole. Because we still have guys that can climb wood poles in, you know, hard to access areas and things like that where we can't get a truck. So.
In concrete?
What's that?
There's concrete poles.
Yep. There's concrete and there's fiberglass poles as well.
Okay.
But I, I want to make sure, Jason, do you have time to talk about the team?
Sure. Yeah, I wanted to go back to Commissioner Katz's question. So in terms of like the long-term efforts of, you know, do we see ourselves aiming to close this gap? You know, a couple of years ago, we did do an assessment. We had kind of like a 10-year plan, but to, to close that gap across the various assets that we are targeting to replace. But we are revisiting that, especially now, because, you know, we have been given approval to actually establish a dedicated power system reliability program team, which we've already initiated, beginning with the hiring of a new manager who's sitting here, Javier. Can you stand up? So Javier Noriega, he is now just maybe two months ago. Congrats, Javier. He's appointed as the new manager over the Power System Reliability Program Group. And one of the first tasks that he's charged with is doing like a resource planning and also assessing the targets, you know, revisiting that red line that you see on that chart there to see if that's truly what we need to do, if it needs to go higher or if it can go lower. And then what are the resources needed to, to close that gap? And over what time period would it take based on the different training requirements for all the different classifications of staff that you need to actually perform that work? So there's, there's a lot of dependencies that are going to have to be looked at. So it's going to be a, a larger resource planning exercise to, to close that gap over time.
Thank you.
There was also a change in inspection cycles that increased the backlog on our replacement program. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. So up on the slide here, so we have our fix-it tickets. So essentially, we, we go, we have a robust inspection program. And we go out and we inspect all, all of our assets to identify issues and problems. And then we give them a, a priority. Typically, a priority one is we want to go out there and fix it right away because it's a, it's a hazard to the public or public safety. So we'll get those addressed. And up on the, up on the screen here, you can see there's a, we have priority threes, priority twos, and priority ones. And out of the 311,000 poles, 63% of them have no work order or fix-it ticket associated with it. 20% of the, of the things that we've identified have a priority three. 17% have either a priority one or a priority two. So with that backlog, we're constantly trying to, you know, reduce that backlog. And we, we reduce that backlog based off of the priority. And then we, we're continually chipping away at that. So it's an ongoing effort. We still have a lot more work to do. And we're going to continue to move forward in that fashion of reducing that backlog for reliability and public safety.
While we're talking about pole climbing and, you know, fixing stuff that's broken, when, when someone, when a man or woman goes out and climbs a pole and for a specific problem, but they see the crossarm or something else that's damaged or broken, do they have the ability to stay on that job and fix that before they come back? Or do they have to come back and get a new ticket before they can go out and do that work?
So, so typically, right, if a, if a consumer found an issue or anybody really found an issue at that point, right, they would, they would get reported, it would end up going to our electric trouble dispatch, and we would send a patrolman out there to address that issue. And they would either fix it perm or make it in a condition to where it would be safe until a, a larger crew, like a line crew or somebody else could come out there and make a more permanent repair. Because sometimes it might be where the whole pole needs to be replaced or transformer needs to be replaced or something along those lines. But by all means, we would not leave it in an unsafe condition. And we would make sure that it was safe before they had left the scene.
So but even, so if they come across something that was not on the ticket when they went out there, they have the ability to fix that or solve, resolve that problem when they get out there?
That's correct. Yeah. So typically, you could have multiple work orders on one pole. When a crew goes out there to address that fix-it ticket, they're going to address everything on that pole and leave it in a, in a state where it's compliant and safe.
But is that because they already had tickets for that pole for the other, the other things as well? Or?
Yeah. I mean, if they're out there and they had a, a job to replace a I sign and, and the transformer was failing, they're going to fix all the issues on that, on that pole and close them all out.
Thanks.
I believe there's readiness on this to conclude this. No other questions are needed? Otherwise, we will never get to our closed session and the other events that we have to attend to.
We have one other item after this report that we have to take care of.
Okay. Okay. So just to kind of mimic what was presented on the distribution transformers, there's, you know, similar effort across all the different sectors in the power system. Here's another example of substation equipment. The two charts that you see on the right, the top is circuit breakers, the bottom is substation transformers. These are the larger transformers. These are the larger transformers we were talking about earlier. Similar to distribution transformers, they also have gaps that we are aiming to close that we're going to plan to resource to close that. Additionally, we are looking for ways to drop the red line, you know, our targets, finding ways to better, um, assess our equipment, like through gas analysis. There may be transformers that could last longer than their targeted, um, average life that we could, um, you know, let them remain for a few more years longer. And then there's also what was mentioned earlier about, uh, life extensions. So just, um, moving quickly here, on, on the left, you could see example of a breaker life extension being performed. So since 2016, when this program began, 924 circuit breakers had life extensions performed. That's almost 20% of all the breakers that we had. So, um, you know, due to our limitations on replacing them, we are, um, you know, trying to find ways to extend the life and, um, reduce the amount that we need to, uh, replace. Um, and then on the right side, uh, wanted to also note one other major effort that we've embarked on, and that's, um, station replacement. So many team members across the power system came together and created a weight-based scoring system to assess our stations based on the equipment age, the condition, um, the configuration at many times, which are non-standard, came up with a scoring criteria and determined which stations would both, would best benefit from being replaced. So you kind of see the top of the list there in the top right. So also wanted to point out that, uh, in addition to coming up with the criteria and determining the stations that would benefit most from replacement, we've also teamed up with our planning, um, division, assessed which stations are forecasted to experience overload in the coming 10 years. You could see the dots there, the larger the dot, the higher it scored on the replacement list. And then if it's an orange or red dot, that means it was forecasted to have, experience overload over the coming 10 years. And with that information, um, we've determined that there are about seven locations where we do, um, want to pursue building new stations to both alleviate the loading, um, anticipated as well as, um, to replace and phase out some of those older stations or refurbish them. But, but we need new stations first to shift the load to in order to do that. And this would also help us like address many of the assets, not just a transformer program or a breaker program at a station. You could go and mobilize once for everything, so. One of the last things here that I wanted to talk about also is the additional distribution voltage pilot that we are, um, pursuing. So, um, as you may or may not know, many of the other utilities around the area do have a higher voltage than us. We're at a 4.8 KV system. So we are going to, um, execute a pilot to install and deliver power at the 12 KV voltage. There are many benefits to this, um, such as the, higher the voltage, you could run circuits longer, which means you could have fewer assets to support circuits. And then there's also, you know, better power quality due to, um, lower impacts from voltage drops. So there are a lot of benefits to that, as well as also detecting voltage. If we select, um, the proper configuration, there's a ability to better detect where and when a voltage occurs. We have a plan, we've identified a location, it's, uh, called DS 74, where we are going to be, uh, implementing this pilot, um, 12 KV system. So we're looking forward to, to learning from this. Uh, we, from this, we're going to be learning a few things, such as what configuration, um, we should select, as well as we'll get some better estimates as to what like cost may be in timeline for the deployment of this throughout our system. And with that, this is, uh, the last slide. I have just the ongoing enhancements that we have for the Power System Reliability Program. Uh, and as I mentioned, we're building out the program management team. And, uh, the items that you see here are some of the tasks, the priority tasks that this team's going to be embarking on, including the human resource planning that I mentioned, also helping to facilitate the improvement of our data quality, some of which we've already talked about, um, so we could actually do work smarter and not just more. Uh, also, we are going to be issuing a, a task order very soon to get some, um, outside third party to assess how we are going about our programs in terms of prioritization, to see if it's, uh, effective, if it, how it compares to other utilities in the industry. So we do want to see how we stack up in the granular details. And then also, we need to emphasize safety. There are some items in the, uh, system that do not necessarily directly impact, um, reliability or power outages. Uh, for example, we have substructures, the vaults in the streets. Um, they, they are a small factor of, uh, our power outages, but they are very critical for the safety of our employees and the public. So we want to ensure that there's a focus on that. And lastly, um, what's discussed, uh, equity. We are engaged with the L.A. 100 Equity Strategies to ensure that, um, we are ensuring our programs' upgrades and replacements are factoring in, uh, equity across the, the city for especially our disadvantaged communities. And, and with that, that concludes the presentation and we're open to any further questions.
At least for now, so, but no, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good work and, um, critical area and appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. Can we get a copy of the PowerPoint also? Not now, I mean.
Yes, yeah. Will do.
I think the commissioners, yeah, commissioners would like to have that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We got one more thing to do before we, um, are out of here. We have, um, we have a grievance?
Yes, item, item in 12 was not heard. It's a matter regarding Personal Relations Committee report for grievance number M 01123 filed by Wilo, William Ariola Jr., John Bacon, Romel Balboa, Kenneth Boone, James Case, Vincent Casillas, William Gonzalez, Dennis Honor, James Mayer, John Mohannon, Sean Nicklaw, David Owen, Richard Quinn, Glenn Slattery, and Christopher Tripp. A single designated representative is permitted to speak for five minutes to address the board regarding the grievance.
Hi, William Ariola, real quick, thank you very much for those of you that serve and know David and Mr. Yonis, thank you very much for your service and all that, you know, still remaining here as well. Also, real quick, TDDs, our jobs here at the department, you may not know just by the title, is to absolutely, actually do everything that you just went through. We are the ones in charge of the districts that put the personnel out into place and prioritize that work to get the transformers, poles, conductor, and everything made safe. We run the districts, okay? Just so you understand where our grievance is coming from.
And I would throw a question, Terry, if I had.
Yeah, and I'm proud of you. Thank you, both sides, USC, UCLA.
Yeah, good morning, or good afternoon now. My name is Karina Lee, I'm representing the class action grievance. I was told that each one had five minutes, that they would give me their time. But I will speak slowly because I'm from New York, I'll speak, I can speak fast, but it's about seven minutes, so please bear with us. We're going to lay the foundation and the supporting evidence, summarize the, what the actual issue is in a few comments. March 16th, 2020, Mayor Garcetti signed an executive order clearing a local emergency to shut down the City of Los Angeles due to the COVID-19 pandemic. He directed the Emergency Operation Organization to take in the necessary steps for the protection of life, health, and the safety of the City of Los Angeles. As follows, all city departments shall review and revise their continuity of operations plans, COOP, to address the risks of COVID-19 possessed to their critical functions in coordination with the Emergency Management Department, EMD, and shall coordinate all crisis communications to employees and to the public with EMD. The Los Angeles Department, while DWP Power System Department Emergency Plan was activated once a state of emergency was declared by the mayor of Los Angeles. The Power System Department Emergency Plan Activation Procedures can be found on pages 41 and 42, Section 7 of the contingency plans and operation procedures. The mayor's declaration supersedes any other standing procedures during that time of, including that of the emergency general manager. On June 16th, 2020, an emergency WebEx meeting was held where TDDs were given a work directive by Andrew Kendall, Assistant General Manager of Power Transmission and Distribution, PTD, and Brian Wilber, Director of PTD. And I thought LAPD had a lot of acronyms. Each gave work directives to all the intendents that TDDs's will work overtime and remain on duty to monitored field crews during overtime during the COVID-19 emergency. Transmission and Distribution District Supervisors, TDDs's, were responsible for coordinating and making up the safety of field crews, scheduling vital work assignments, implementing constantly changing COVID-19 safety protocols, as well as ensuring power to the emergency triage field hospitals for treating COVID-19 patients. They worked in partnership with other city agencies to expedite power installation to the National Guard, emergency locations, and work encampments, all while ensuring that the citizens of Los Angeles had reliable power. Additionally, TDDs's expedited the installation of power to transitional housing projects so that the homeless population would have a home where they felt safe and sheltered in place during the pandemic. TDDs are listed as essential personnel and provide essential functions EF. Their reporting locations are listed as critical operation facilities utilized by LAPD during a declared emergency in the LEDW COOP document dated January 31st, 2020. Appendix D on page 31 identifies, list, excuse me, identifies critical operations facility locations utilized by DWP as number one on the list is power system operations, which the TDDs all report to perform their essential function duties. TDDs standard protocols per COOP, pages 12 through 14, tables 1 through 3, responsibilities dictate that they remain on-site for liability, risk management, and safety reasons a unit for all personnel accounted for and are off-duty. TDDs are classified in all the Department Emergency Plan documents as essential personnel, COOP Page 4, staff necessary for the performance of DWP's essential functions and therefore were mandated to be at work. On page 35 of the MEAU, their MOU, under Note 7, the following classification and pay levels which are considered critical for maintaining day-to-day uninterrupted supply of power and electricity to the City of Los Angeles are to be treated as non-salaried positions. The managers involved in this class action grievance are classified as 3875 Transmission/Distribution District Supervisors, TDDs. So here's the issue. Under MOU Article 8.2D, compensation notwithstanding Article 7, to the contrary, whenever a manager is directed by the general manager to work overtime during a designated emergency, or whenever a manager is required to remain on duty or the department's premises in order to maintain department operations during a designated emergency, the manager, excuse me, the manager will be considered to be on duty during all such hours and shall be paid at the rate of time and one-half. If any other provision in the MOU is greater, overtime compensation, that provision shall prevail. LEDWP violated MEAU Article 8.2D when they failed to compensate the grievance at time and one-half for all the time that work required to maintain department operations and are required to remain on the department's presence during the pandemic emergency basis upon the numerous grounds, including the following reasons. First, they were given work directives. Secondly, they were required to remain on duty or on DWP property, no other way they can perform the EF duties to maintain department operations during a designated emergency.
Excuse me, Speaker, your time allotment has expired.
Yes, ma'am, but they stated that I have other, sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. In closing, DWP-written protocols per COOP and ERP clearly state that the responsibilities of TDDs are essential personnel and dictate that they remain on-site and that they shall be paid for the rate of time and one-half. Their grievance were paid straight time for the regular hours worked. However, the violation is they were not compensated for the half-time for each hour worked during the emergency. The class action grievance has been very clear from the beginning. The grievants are not asking for overtime, but rather seeking compensation for half-time for each hour, regular hours worked per their MOU. Whether you agree or disagree with the language, the MOU is a governing document of working hours, conditions, and pay. Also, because they're non-salaried treated positions, those that are in this class action and were given a direct order are the only ones that will be not compensated, not the entire MEA unit of all sworn, excuse me, of all personnel. As, as far as timeliness of initiating the grievance, the grievance have an ongoing violation of not being compensated for each regular hour not worked until the emergency was declared over by the mayor of the City of LA and then filed prior to the end of that emergency. Therefore, the filing of the grievance is timeliness. If there was no emergency declared, how was DWP able to submit reimbursements requested FEMA under COOP and was paid by FEMA for those reimbursements for COVID starting on March 19, 2020? We also have documentation that shows DWP submitted reimbursements for selected TDDs's, some of which are named in the grievance, and their wages for working during this emergency. We have copies for those documents if you like. Management cannot have it both ways. There was an emergency declared by the mayor per the MOU, TDs are entitled to the additional half-time compensation for hours worked. It is that straightforward. Without waiving any rights for the settlement discussions only, instead of seeking reimbursement for each and every hour half, excuse me, for each and every half-time compensation, the grievance were not paid during the emergency, we are willing to settle this grievance for a mutually agreeable, reasonable amount of compensation for each member for the class. In the event it is denied, our grievance does not reach a reasonable settlement, we will have exhausted all applicable administrative remedies in this matter and will be compelled to seek judicial relief. We believe our interpretation of the applicable MOU provisions is relevant rule and as well as the regulations incorrect have retained a law firm to move forward with litigation. Shall this matter not be resolved? Thank you.
Thank you.
I tried to speak slowly, sorry.
Excuse me?
I tried to speak slowly.
Let me just say, and I, let me just say, and I know we have a commissioner here who is assigned to that.
Who will be speaking next.
And, and who will be speaking next. We get what is called a book brief. In other words, the essence. And the fact that you want to litigate, that's on you, that's why we got courts, so you do what you want. I'm inclined, at this point, having book briefed and paid very close attention to the facts that were presented to me, to accept the recommendations of the commissioners, McGraw, who is not here, and Katz, who are here, notwithstanding, understanding your position. So, Commissioner.
We, you know, interacted previously in the, in the Personnel Committee. I believe you have received the report. So while Commissioner McGraw and I, and I'm sure the whole board, you know, really do appreciate your service to the department and your dedication during the pandemic and that you, along with all of our department personnel, were instrumental in, um, fulfilling the department's mission during that time. And we are sympathetic, um, to, you know, all of you who served during that time. When we carefully reviewed the information provided and all of the documentation and your prior statements, um, what we found is that the language of Article 8, um, you know, is really quite clear and that Article 8.2D clearly states, whenever performing functions outside their normal duties, um, sorry, whenever a manager is directed to work overtime during the designated emergency or is required to remain on duty. So the interpretation of that language seems to be unmistakable and it does indicate that the 1.5, um, pay would be for overtime, meaning outside your regularly assigned hours or performing job functions outside the normal duties. And so the committee notes that grievance were paid, um, time and one-half when working overtime, which is what is indicated in the article. So for the above reasons, as indicated in the detailed report, um, the Personnel Committee does recommend unfortunately that this grievance be denied, but we appreciate you coming to share your perspective and understand and have received your perspective about moving forward with other, um, options outside of the grievance process. If you want to say something, yeah? Thank you.
So the, the motion would be to uphold the?
To accept the?
Accept the Stafford.
The recommendation from the Personnel Committee, yeah.
So our case does claim that, but it does say "or," and we hit on the?
Excuse me?
Where we were given a work directive to remain at work in order to monitor our crews.
Thank you, I appreciate that, the, the language indicates remain on duty beyond the normal hours. It does not indicate during normal hours.
Okay, we're not going to have a debate about it.
Unfortunately, we can't continue to discuss.
I just was clarifying what you had mentioned.
It's okay.
Thank you.
She sat through the hearing, she understands more of it than most people do.
Part I can't hear you.
Sorry?
It's okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarification, but our interpretation of the language is still clear and still stands. Thank you.
All right, thanks. You're going to go to court anyhow, so that's, you know. All right, so, um, motions to accept the finding of the, uh, committee and motion second without objection.
Second.
Everybody, all four ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Such will be the order.
Aye.
All right, Ben, you want to lead us into closed session?
Yes.
Please.
The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.
Great.
Thank you.